All those calls in order to be to Butler County Commissioners. Would you please rise for another silent prayer called by the public. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning.
The public comment portion of our meeting provides residents and taxpayers of Butler County the opportunity to comment on matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before the Board prior to taking official action. Presentations must be limited to three minutes. The Chairman has asked me to remind everyone that no personal attacks on the character or reputation of county employees, department heads, or any official will be tolerated. Any speaker doing so may be ruled out of order by the Chair. I'll call the names in the order that they appear on the sign-up sheet, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and your municipality of residence. James Exton.
My name is James Exton, Butler Township. Approximately three years ago, the local carrier sent out an email title to department head, "Request from Commissioner Exton for Information." Language contained within the email stated, "If the request is for information that is public and available to any member of the public, then you are required to provide it to Commissioner Exton." Now let's move forward to last Monday. Our new CYS Director Charlie Johns decided that one of his first changes for the New Year is to get two attorneys working in his office, 27 percent raises. They would be Sue Lope and Ron Thomas. Ron Thomas has close ties to the Commissioner's office. His wife just happens to be Dale Pinkerton, the Secretary. No conflict of, uh, for Dale buttering that sweetheart deal there, is there? Can I, I can assure the public that the two grandpupils of Butler County don't see this 27 percent increase as a conflict, but a right-of-passage entitlement. Peggy and I only had one and a half days to explore Charlie Johns' new 27 percent entitlement program. Yesterday, Charlie blocked our research for requiring a five-day right-to-know request to be submitted by my office. Obviously, his new, uh, and his new Director of Viewing Services, Joyce Zanesworth, had a flashback to the local carrier's illegal directive from three years ago. I'm going to make public the research we were able to do. Charlie stated in his 27 percent pay increase request that no increase has been given to, since 94. That is false. The two lawyers in question, Ron Thomas took the job in 2006 and Sue Lope in 2004. They accepted these part-time jobs at approximately $40,000 per year. Thomas has eight years of service and Lope has 10. We were able to find out what hours Thomas and Lope billed for their approximately, their approximate pay per hour for the last six months of 2014 before we were banned from the truth. Ron Thomas made $73 per hour last year working for the county, and Sue Lope made $57 per hour. Why does a woman make less, asks Charlie Johns and Joyce Zanesworth, who looks like sexual discrimination to me? The proposed increase would give Thomas a $93 per hour rate, a 30, 24 percent increase per contract year, and Sue Lope a 73 per hour rate, a 2.7 increase per year. Why less for a woman? Let them explain, and I don't know. Sue Lope and her husband Mark Lope is the ADA for Butler County and are both respected attorneys for Butler County. CYS Director Johns also implied state laws changed in his 27 percent request. That is false. These lawyers have the same duties under state laws they did before. The public elected me to contain the cost of government and keep services high, no matter how these two elitist power brokers spin their propaganda. The public can be assured that I am honored to have this opportunity and will continue to uphold my oaths of office and act on my conservative values into my last day of office. Thank you very much.
Peggy Abersold.
These two gentlemen wanted to speak, but they may not have checked the box to speak.
Gentlemen, were you asking to address the Board?
Yeah, I didn't know.
That's all right.
Box is on there.
And your names, please?
Dean Zinkin.
Okay.
Chris right under mine.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
I apologize.
I just, I knew they were in and they wanted to talk, and I just wanted to correct that.
Thank you. We'll, uh, we'll have you speak after, Mrs. Abersold.
Peggy Abersold, Middlesex Township. During January and February of each year, the volunteer fire companies install their new officers and often advise commissioners to attempt. The fire companies, both in Butler County and across the state, are in need of volunteers. In an effort to address the volunteer shortage in Butler County, the Volunteer Firefighter Initiative Fund was kicked off this past July 2014 through the Cranberry Township Community Chest. The idea was conceived by Cranberry Township Supervisor Bruce Hesler and former Cranberry Fire Company President. The purpose of the initiative is to recruit and train volunteer firefighters with a fundraising goal of $500,000. As of January 26, more than $352,000 of their goal was raised. The county contributed approximately $130,000 from its Marcella Shield funds for the purchase of a training trailer. Money raised for the initiative will be used for recruitment, educational training trailers, and educational scholarships at DC3. Eligibility for the scholarship is a pledge of two-year service to a volunteer fire department. So far, 10 DC3 scholarships are funded with the Goldway team. Butler County has numerous municipalities occupied by businesses, schools, nonprofit organizations, and residences, and is served by 32 volunteer fire companies. This firefighter initiative project impacts every community in Butler County. This volunteer shortage for armed firefighter and other emergency personnel is a reality across the state of Pennsylvania, and a package of Senate bills have been introduced by Senator Greenlee to promote both recruitment and retention of both volunteer firefighters and emergency service personnel. I want to close with this thought. There are none more noble than those who unselfishly give up their time and put their lives on the line in each and every call. Thank you. Peggy Abersold.
Dean Zinkin.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm the Mayor of Evans City, and welcome and glad to meet the Commissioners. I've never been here before, but it's my pleasure to stand up in front of you. You guys are all bringing a nice job, and I appreciate that. Why I'm here, I have a little blood, sweat, and tear speech here. I have a blood as a problem, and the sweat is the hard work that we've been trying to do in Evans City, and my tears are for the people of Evans City. And the problem in Evans City that we're facing is the closing of our park and the pool in town. As we have done through the other boroughs in the county, for example, Mars and closing of their pools. The sweat, will we still be given the answer no? The sweat through our hard work and efforts in facing the problem because of no grant in the county for this, for the people. The tears, as I said, the blood, the sweat, and the tears. The tears will be all these children and all these families at Edco Park. The park's been like 50 years old, and we still do not have the money and grants from the county. How can one park, and I love Glade Run, don't get me wrong, be given $114,000, and here we sit in Evans City with busted poles and people not being able to come to that pole, and the kids with tears in their eyes? We need a grant in Evans City. You have sent down a hundred and, like I said, $14,000. At first, you would not give Glade Run any monies. They asked for $5,000, and you said you didn't have it. Before long, $4,000 comes out of the budget in the fund, and then $55,000 last year, $55,000 this year in the budget. Where? And I would like a copy of your expense and your revenues of where the legacy monies and the impact fees money are going. You may send that to my borough office at 204B South Jackson Street in Evans City. The revenues and the expense of the impact fees and the legacy funds. I do not see how one is not appropriating these funds correctly. I got the application for grant funding here. I'm gonna drop it off personally to Gary Pinkerton. Is my time up?
No, sir.
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm a BSer, like my cousin. But anyway, please, if you guys can help me at all, I would certainly appreciate it. I brought another young gentleman from our area with me, and I think he's on the floor next, I hope, to go and continue about Edco Park. He lived there, he grew up there, and he has something to say about Edco Park. Thank you for your time, and I rest all of you. Thank you very much.
I'd like to, I'd like to respond to that, and then you can speak right after I respond. Mayor, I'll gladly send you where the money's been appropriated since we got the Marcella Shield Legacy Funds, which we only use on parks. I'll be glad to do that for you. Peggy and I'll be at that without, in a week, okay?
You show me the revenue and the expense of this?
That's, uh, the, actually.
I, I went to the COG meeting, and they had a whole list of recipients there, but it didn't say how much was given to each one with Gary Pinkerton. I would like to have that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get it for you, but I'd like to talk about this, too. That I spoke at a COG meeting recently, and I pointed out that there were three counties at a C cap event that they did exactly opposite. Dale went to this, and three counties said what they did with their Marcella Shield Legacy money. Two of the counties gave 100 percent of their money back to the municipalities, okay? One did 80 percent. Now, we've got it backwards here in Butler County, and Bill and Dale promote that. Obviously, people know from the press that I want to do something different. You know, at this rate, I'd be happy if it was 50-50 or something. But basically, we've given $400,000 to ourselves and only $114,000, and this is gen, approximately $114,000 to Glade Run Lake. And I believe there was arm twisting from the state to facilitate.
Did the Governor call you?
How?
This was, this was.
I, you know, but I, I'd just like to say this. I believe that was miraculous, because all of a sudden, we wouldn't give them anything, and then we were giving $55,000 a year. I believe there was a call made from the state, because the Governor went, came out and gave us money for that, and, and I'm, I think the Dean believes this, too. He's not against Glade Run Lake, he just wants it to be spread out. And that's what I want, too, to come up with a proposal that would let this money go out to much-needed communities. I grew up in Evans City, so I'm a little biased, but thank you, Dean, and.
Chris, ladies.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of council. My name is Chris Lee. I grew up in Evans City, right down the street from Edco Park. I'm here to talk to you about that very place today. I, as well as many others, were heartbroken to hear about the issues Edco Park faces, but not very surprised. The park has seen better days, better years, but it's still a place where, in my youth, we rushed for a dip in pool away from the hot sun, a game of half-court basketball under the tree by the fence, where we had our first job, because our parents didn't have to drive us anywhere to do so. In those days, even, and even today, there was very little for us to do in the town for being twerp all the way up to a teen that did not involve us coming around some areas where there is trouble. I know that Edco is not very, is not a big part of the, or, sorry. I know that Edco isn't much, but it is a big part of a small town, and it has been there for a very long time. With upcoming management changes, we might find new ideas to help make the pool profitable again. Simple things like yoga and zumba classes in the park, more late-night swims, community days, charity events, fundraising cookouts, or sponsored festivals are little things that can be done if the right person is cho, is chosen with the name of the manager. But to get someone like that, they need the hopefulness that they are working towards and that, towards something that would be, make a lasting impact on the community around them. That is why I'm asking you to use any possible grant funds in the future towards making this happen in the most useful and effective ways. Starting at the top of the list is the baby pool. It has been neglected for years. It used to be that every parent in town would bring their toddlers so that they could play until they were tuckered out, while their older children could run the big pool with their friends. Now toddlers get the thrill of playing on the steps where they get run over by the larger kids, or they only get escorted around the big pool in the arms of their parents. Top priorities should go to resurfacing and new drainage, because everyone needs their own area where they can have fun and feel safe. Bringing the baby pool back does that while bringing profit, rather than scurrying to them, Lope, that, that does nothing to keep parents from going back. Next should be resurfacing and revitalizing the full-size pool to help keep and bring in more customers. The parking lot with its asphalt tidal waves should probably follow next in line to help the general appearance and attractive, attract, rather than repel more people before they leave the car. The basketball court may also be resurfaced easily in conjunction with that. Finally, small things like evicting the bees from the volleyball court and putting up, putting up usable nets, putting more park benches in, or even small area for bands to play during events. The park could use a little bit of touch-up. Let's do things that make the pool more profitable again first, so that it's self-sufficient. To conclude, this whole thing will take more than just a little bit of work and elbow grease. We need the right people who have the right funds and put it into the right places to make this work. The park can be better than it ever was if we give it a shot. We are a small town with big neighbors. People that like.
Tom, you're up, sir.
Okay. I just have one more line, if you don't mind. People like that and will be excited to come with their families to escape the hustle-bustle and traffic of the surrounding areas into the future days to come. Thank you, and sorry for running over my time.
I'd like to make a statement here. Can you please help me? Uh, I get two minutes here, but I, I was going to go to notice the other day in the papers, is it February 21st, the fundraisers are golf outing at the park?
Yes.
Okay, I do have the date right?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, yeah, February 21st. I just want everybody to know.
Chili open.
Huh?
Yes, it's a chili cookout and golf.
Yeah, they usually have, if it's real cold, it's a con, closed facility. I was there last year, the slush was deep, and I hit the ball, it was an interesting experience. I had so much fun last year, I'm gonna go this year. Maybe the, the American join me in my group to go.
I have nine on it, I might ditch it ahead.
I'll, I'll stand back, but anyway, maybe he would like to join in if I, if he would do me the favor. But anyway, I am going to it, it's on February 21st, and it is a unique experience, and I don't golf. But I did have a good time, and the chili was excellent, and they have baskets to promote and sell baskets, so it was a really good event. Thank you, you know, not many young people come here. I really appreciate you coming and doing your civic.
Thank you, it's very important to us. Thank you for your guys' time, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
That's all for public comment.
Okay, we have finished our January 5th and January 7th meetings. If you're looking for approval, so, uh, through second.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, the ones who say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are two. Any other proclamations?
None today, sir.
Okay, any old business?
Likewise, none today.
New business?
New business, under court administration. Tom Holm.
Morning, gentlemen.
Morning, Tom.
I have three things for your consideration this morning. First, our ratification of the acceptance of a snow removal contract with the MBJ office in Cranberry with Wayman's Landscap, I ask for your approval. Ask for your ratification of this.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I also ask for your ratification of the agreement for the formats that will be delivered down there. You have, you have to keep working, trying to ask for a different, that agreement.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'm asking for your approval today for addendum to the MHYN services contract with Division Drug Testing Services to the Authorization Department. Ask for your approval now and then.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Tom.
Tom, I'd like to compliment you. You did a good job in keeping the braces down on this stuff, so.
We worked hard at that, and, uh, you gotta give Ramona Patterson credit for that, because she called and called and called and, uh, worked it fine below us, works on.
Oh, so I'm giving the wrong card. Who is it again?
Ramona Patterson.
Oh, she.
She's the administrative assistant down at Cranberry.
Uh, oh.
She did all the legwork.
Oh, okay.
By back to whip, because she did the legwork, so.
Yeah, she didn't use the stink on the bed, or did she?
No, no, no.
Okay. Oh, thanks, Tom.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I appreciate you said it was hard.
Next, under Emergency Services, Steve Feishausen.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
I have three items for your consideration today. Item number one is ratification of authorization to apply for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. This grant is a federally funded grant administered through PMA and pays for 50 percent salary for myself and our emergency fans. Last year, we owe the pool for over $76,000. This year, we're up to $9,283,700. If I ask for approval on that?
Your motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Item number two I have is ratification of authorization to apply for the 2015, 2016 Wireless Grant, and for the Chairman to sign certifying that the funds have been used according to Chapter 53 of the Emergency Telephone Service Act of Title 35. I ask for your authorization for that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries.
And item number three I have for you is approval to revise a previous agreement of consolidated communications to provide long-distance services on three outgoing lines from our 911 switch. As you're aware, we are now under the West Quarter. The new switch is in and installed, and moving some lines around. We have three outbound lines that did not have long distance on them, and we need to add that. We already have an existing agreement with them, but there's no additional charge to account for it. Do I ask for authorization now?
Your motion, motion?
I'll, I'll second that.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I ask for me some big excuse, but I'm, you're excused. Tom, do you have any questions for Caleb?
No questions.
Thank you, Penny.
Thanks, Peter.
Next, under Facilities and Operations, John Campbell.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, John.
First thing I have for you to agree would be a contract with Simplex for now for a manual fire management, fire contest, dry system inspection, wet system, quick cleaning, and cleaning inspection. This will be a three-year contract, April 1st, 2015, March 31st, 2018, for the total amount of $20,865.
That's the three years, John?
That's, that's per year.
Per year, okay.
And million pieces.
What's per year? How much is a jump?
Twenty, twenty-eight, sixty-five, they month turn it.
It was stated in the other one, that was a three-year contract.
Yeah, it's a three-year contract.
That's a price per year?
Correct.
Okay. I read, I read it wrong then.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
And that, that is the same price we had last year, is that correct, John, you said?
Last year, you, per last, I feel, six years, we'll be talking about price for six years.
Okay, okay.
Those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second thing I have for you today is the ratification for the approval of a service for consolidating communications to have one line to the District magistrate's office in Cranberry for $26.55 per month.
This is for the fire protection, the fire response, just to have a dedicated line. Is there a motion to approve this? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor?
Question, I have a question for gentlemen. I didn't understand that, like, if you're in a house, like, if you have guarding, you don't have to have a dedicated line? Why, why is, do they require a dedicated line for this? Different system, or? You know, if you have your own house, guarding against a call and calls the fire company?
Yeah, this, this is a standalone, you know, in case you're on a phone line or something, or something happens to it, it has to have a standalone. Simplex for now is a silent night. It comes from, sends it from the panel, it sends it to the silent night, and the silent night then dialed 911. It's our end unit up at the communication center.
It's because it's commercial, or? You know, you don't do it at your house, I'm just asking here.
Yeah, it's per code.
Huh?
It's per code.
Oh, per code, okay, that's what I was getting.
Cranberry Township.
NFP version.
Okay. But it's code, okay, okay. I was just curious, because residents don't have to do it. Okay, thank you, Phil.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Third thing I have today is approval of change order in GCO 5, Government Center Annex Loop Insulation. This would be the replacement of a heat and membrane on the Government Center Annex, and adding the installation, insulation to make it slip in the amount of $50,504.53.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I will say our solicitor worked on the possible, getting me a motion, to know we're responsible for not getting the right plans in there. Those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Lastly, the last thing I have for you is an agreement with a double disposal for Cranberry magistrate's. This will be a once-a-week pickup. It will be a five-year contract, February 1st, 2015, January 31st, 2020, with a $35 a month cost for a 96 gallon container, with possibly great increases.
This, this come down quite a bit from London, right?
Yes.
It's $35 a week in London now. This is much better.
I didn't have that paper working on me.
Is there a motion to approve this? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lastly, I'd like permission from the Chair to sign all of them, to spot all the contracts for the championship.
Your motion approved that?
I'll make that one.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You may be excused. Any questions for Dylan, for ladies? Okay.
Next, under the prison, Gordon Jaiver.
Morning, Commissioner.
I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm here to seek approval to renew the agreement with Butler County Community College for the use of their training facility, their training equipment, and to train, training providing to prison personnel, amount of $6,800.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And this, uh, thanks to everything, instructors and whole work?
Yep.
Okay. Good deal, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Those in favor, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. May I be excused?
Yes, thank the college for giving us a good break.
We'll thank them also. Always say them the next time, that is good.
Next, under Assessment, Chris Savage.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning. Wow. That's what I say, wow.
I'm asking for a reservation of the approval of the E quote approval from Thomas Fredguth and Company for appraisable services related to some upcoming assessment appeal hearings.[1633.64]
I'll make that motion.
Excuse me, I'll second it. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Those in carries.
I'm also asking for approval of a payment and rule agreement between Morris Holdings, also known as St. John's. The school district in Adams Township has already approved of this.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
You say both other entities have a credit, they have a school district, Ken and the borough?
None of the boroughs, Adams Township, correct. Adams Township.
Morris. Morris.
But it's in Adams Township.
Yeah, okay.
Morris area school board but Adams Township.
Morris area school district did approve it. Adams Township also approved it.
Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, under Bridge Program, Kevin Gray.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Kevin.
Good morning, I'll be asking for your approval or bid for the budget system at the Iron City Bridge in Zilling Oak. It would be to Mac Industries, the Pennsylvania Incorporated for $24,036.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
And due to the fact we only had one bid, you checked this out and it was?
Yeah, our, our estimate was between 40,000 and 50,000. This came in at 44,000. Actually, it looks like they have some extra quantities in there that will be reduced from the 44,000 and even lower from that.
Good.
Right, they, they had an advantage too, just so that he told us this on Monday, they're closer.
Yeah, they're closer, yeah.
They're much closer.
They're money close, yeah, they're based over in Sharon, Ohio, which the other companies are in middle of New York and down in Maryland.
Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Kevin.
Next, under the mapping department, Donna Armheiser.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning, Donna.
I seek your approval today to renew a software maintenance agreement with Esri for 2015, the amount of $1,378. This agreement covers the GIS software maintenance for mapping, emergency services, conservation districts, and information technologies.
I'll make that one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We're doing all four of these together?
Yes, yes, you can have the both.
It's all the same company, right?
All of the same.
Okay. Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Do you need another one, or? Any excuse?
Yes. Do you have any questions for Donna, or Chris? Now's the chance, he has a tie on today. Thanks, Chris. Donna would be on much longer.
Just so the public knows, as Chris goes out in the field, he does field assessment work too, so that's what the, a lot of times he, he does the whole gambit, so he goes out in the field a lot. So, he doesn't have to, he doesn't have to wear a tie very often, but that's what they're talking about.
Next, under Parks and Recreation, we have two items for your consideration. The first is the approval of the following reappointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Diane Ziegus, representing Region Four, for a term expiring December 31st, 2017, and Judy Snyder, as an at-large representative, with a term expiring December 31st, 2017. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we ask your approval of the following new appointments to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Dustin Drew, who is manager of Moraine State Park, as an at-large representative replacing Jake Island, for a term expiring December 31st, 2017. Second is Pete Geis, recreation director of Cranberry Township, as an at-large representative, also with a term expiring December 31st, 2017, and Dave Zarnick, Butler Township Commissioner, filling the unexpired term of Region One for a term expiring December 31st, 2015. We ask your approval.
Is there a motion to approve these?
So.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carries?
Next, under Human Services, Children and Youth Agency, Charlie Johns.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Charlie.
I have two items for your approval today. First, I'm requesting the approval of a new contract with the Children and Youth Agency, Guardian Adlight and Sue Lope and Ron Thomas. The position of Guardian Adlight represents the best interest of children and juvenile court dependency proceedings. These court-appointed positions are funded with 50% state and 50% county dollars. Guardian Adlight have not received, the Guardian Adlight position has not received a rate increase, increase since 1994. The new contract will reflect a monthly increase of $917. These contracts also reflect new duties, responsibilities, and best practices as set forth by the Administrative Office of Pennsylvania Courts and the Supreme Court of Pennsylvania. The previous contract did not have an end date. This proposed contract will expire on December 31st, 2015. And I'd like to note to the board that these contracts were negotiated prior to me being appointed as the Director of Children and Youth. Additionally, Commissioner Eckstein has requested further information of me that I have not yet had the time to produce. Yesterday afternoon, I attempted to contact Commissioner Eckstein to clarify his requests, and I could not reach him. If the board requests that I delay this vote until a future meeting, I have no issue with doing so.
Is there a motion to approve this?
I, I make the motion.
Is there a second? I will second it. Discussion?
I'd like to table it. I'd like to, motion for to table this until I get the information needed that we can make the decision. Obviously, if you didn't come up with the information yet, you guys didn't get it either, and you're making the decision on not knowing the total information? I mean, if you couldn't get it to me, I mean, Charlie, did you get it to them?
No, I, they, they didn't request information on me.
So.
But they didn't request additional information on me.
Yeah, well, the additional information, what they made, and it's just so the public knows, I asked what they made in the preceding three years, and I thought it was very relevant, okay? And the hours worked.
Your motion to table is till when?
Till next.
The next meeting?
Next meeting, yeah.
Is there a second to the motion? I'll second it. Those in favor of the motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. This will be voted on on the next meeting.
Okay, yeah, and you'll give me the information, or us, us. Yeah, thanks.
I, I've got to say this, Charlie, you explained it very well, and I understood what you said. And they, they used to have filled for us for another part of their thing, and they can't do it anymore.
They, they used to build Orphans Court separately. This contract includes the Orphans Court now.
And when you add in the Orphans Court, I think they're probably even better made less money than they did before. That could, the new contract.
That could be, Commissioner.
And twenty, twenty years since they had an increase, at the most, about 1.3% per year.
Right, and I'd also like to clarify, it's true that Ron Thomas and Sue Lope are the current Guardian Adlight. But the Guardian Adlight position has not had the increase over the course of that roughly 20 years.
I'd like to say this, let me make this emphatically clear. When I take on a job somewhere, if you're an individual and you take on a job at a rate, the increase would come, you accepted the job at a certain rate, so I don't care if I work at Interstate 5 HB Star, if you accept that rate, it doesn't matter to me that the rate's been in effect for 20 years. When you accept that wage, you've taken that. Now, if you worked there eight years, it is not, if you worked there eight years like Ron Thomas did, that, that's a 3.4% increase per year. Now, that is not even in the realm of saying that it's 1.2%. I emphatically disagree with that. I take on a job, wherever you work, you know, in a local place, you accept a position, and if you get a 27% increase, it's over the four years. Now, our senior citizens got 0% increase, and we had a prison board, a 0% increase, two years in a row over the past seven years. 0%. And we went to a board meeting yesterday for the pension, and we're talking about deflation with the cost of natural gas and oil going down. So, that, that is totally false. If anybody wants to bring up the premise that you worked someplace eight years, you accepted the salary, and then you, you're getting a 3.4% increase per year. And all the rest is just garbage. It's all smoke and mirrors, okay? It is smoke and mirrors, okay?
Well, they're not getting a 3.4% per year, but if they took the job for however many years it was, they accepted the salary, we're just advertising that out if, in fact, they had received that raise over the period of time, by not taking any raises during that period of time to save the county a lot of money.
Well, let me say this too, these are no-bid contracts. Let me make this clear. These are special interest no-bid contracts. Apparently, we don't think we should put these contracts. I was asking, and they said, the court decides on who they pick, and there's, so all the commissioners can do is set the price. You're not allowed to bid the jobs out because the court supposedly said, we can't do it. That is not good government, and it's garbage. To think that we don't have other lawyers in this county that are, can bid on this is ridiculous. And if you guys want to promote the fact that these are the only two lawyers, we had Roche and Burger and all these attorneys, Houlihan, and go down, they were working for the government, taking money from people, they were crooks, known fellows. And, and we had them in the government, you're telling me only government attorneys are the very best? Roche and Burger, Houlihan, who were some of the other ones? You know, I lost track, there were so many crooks, okay? It makes me sick, and they were all getting no-bid contracts, and they were buddies with the courts. I don't care, that's my, that's my, my thing. You know, I know you can't control that, the judge does, but it's crook, okay? It's crook.
Well, that's all I was saying was that they are court-appointed.
Yeah.
And you do not have this election.
Thank you, Charlie.
My second, I under, is to request the approval of the reappointment of Beth Gillan to the Children and Youth Advisory Board for another three-year term. This term will expire January 31st, 2018.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thanks.
Next, under Human Services, the Drug and Alcohol Program, Joyce Sandler. I'm asking your approval to appoint Kerian Sarhise to the DNA Advisory Board for a three-year term ending January 2018, replacing Dana Hayes.
I'll make that.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I have a question for you while you're here. Who, who, Charlie Johns said somebody over his head asked for a right-to-no request. Can you tell me who it was yesterday that blocked my research?
We met with the chairman of the board and the county solicitor.
Well, who blocked it?
Nobody blocked it. We were advised that Peggy, without the, Peggy was asking for the information, and without the direction from any of the board, that we were told that she was to submit a right-to-no request.
So, the logic here was, you put this request out for 20%, 7% increases for county solicitor to no-bid contracts, and the logic was that you thought that Peggy was doing rogue work when we were supposed to do this? Let me finish, okay? You thought, the logic here is, that you took it upon yourself, or Charlie, or somebody, somehow it went between the Charlie's computer, and you denied me access, and you thought that you'd protect the citizens of Butler County by Peggy was going rogue, and, and not, you know, she was investigating us along her own, is that, was that your idea?
Well, we thought that the request was a lot and, and somewhat unreasonable, so we went to ask what we should do, and that's what we did.
What people were paid and how much money did they make over a three-year time period?
Well, no. There's, there's a lot more detail than that, that I don't know that this is the time and place to get into this discussion, but.
Sure, we're open on discussion.
Don't we have two minutes? I, I thought I had two minutes, just keep it your eye.
You have two minutes to respond, I want.
Well, I am responding, I asked her a question, who, I knew she did.
She asked for the hours, we gave her the hours. Then she said she wanted it broken down between how much court time, how much other time, and we thought that was an unreasonable request. So, we went up to talk to the chairman of the board to say, do we have to do this? Because this is going to be a lot of work for our staff that we don't understand the value or the need for. And that's what we were instructed to do.
So, the, so you're understanding it's the chairman of the board has to say what I receive and what I don't?
No, I just went up there to ask for it.
The chairman of the board makes that decision?
No. No.
Who made the decision?
I made the decision that the request from your administrative assistant needed a right-to-no request. Because the request did not come from you, it came from your assistant. If it came from you, it should have stayed at that.
Well, so, so you felt billed that she was doing this?
I did.
And had no merit to county government, we're giving out the money. Well, here, here goes the money out the door. $11,000 raises, and then you thought we were just spinning our wheels up there, right? I don't know, you know, we were doing our due diligence, and I'm proud of it, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Joyce.
Next, under Human Services, Area Agency, Agent Billy Joe Adams.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
There are three items for our agency. One, we are requesting the approval of a utility agreement with St. Methalvis Church. The term of the agreement is July 1st, 2014 through June 30th, 2015, at a rate of 875 per month. There are no county terms involved, and there's no increase from last year.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We are also asking for an approval of a contract with the nonprofit Development Corporation for snow removal and lawn services to individuals over the age of 60 in Butler County. The cost of this agreement is $10,000, no county costs are involved.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? The motion carries.
And the last request we have is approval to advertise a request for proposal for our remote bordering services. These are the little push units.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks, Billy John.
Next, under Human Services, Community Action and Development, Tony Kennedy.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
We are requesting to ratify the electronic submission of the Consolidated Capital Assistance Grant Agreement to PA Department of Transportation. Butler County was awarded $121,800 for the purchase of two vehicles, two radios, and the replacement of our mobile radio booth theater. We ask for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We are requesting to ratify a contract for community services block grant discretionary funding for the Lawrence County Community Action Program, and this is for veterans employment program. Lawrence Community Action applied for this funding on behalf of the Consortium of Community Action Agencies. Employment program will be operated in conjunction with the Augustist Supportive Services for Veteran Families Program. Term of the contract is January 1st through September 30th, 2015. We request your approval.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We are requesting to amend the 2014 Community Services Block Grant Contract with Center for Community Resources. Nature of this amendment is to increase the contract amount by $3,689 for a new total contract amount of $60,153. We ask for your approval.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We are requesting approval to enter into subcontracts with following agencies for the 2015 Community Services Block Grant Funding. Term of all contracts is January 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2015. Catholic Charities, $54,000. Victim Outreach Intervention Center, $32,000. Lighthouse Foundation, $5,500. Butler County Children's Center, $11,000. Center for Community Resources, $39,000. Butler County Blind Association, $5,500. Salvation Army, $10,000, and Alliance for Nonprofit Resources, $1,900. We ask for your approval.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'd like to say something about this. I, I think we can be so proud of this, this title's up to $160,000. And our block grant, we're allowed, we're spreading our money frugally in the county. You can have money left over, then here, you're allowed to give it to different organizations. And, I mean, we've got the Food Bank here, battered women, we've got Housing Shelter, the Children, the Blind Association, and the After-School Program, and other among that. I'm very proud of that, I'm thankful to be able to do this, because these nonprofits are in desperate need. need, you make no mistake about that, so this is a great thing. Thank you.
Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
We are requesting to ratify the posting of a bid notice for the salvage sale of a BART bus. Sealed bids will be received until 3:00 PM Friday, February 6th. In the Commissioner's office, Attention, Amy Milson, Chief Clerk. Bids must clearly be marked "BART Bus Number 4 Salvage Bid." Bids will be opened on Monday, February 9th, at the Commissioner's Agenda Setting Meeting, 9:30 AM, held on the Bid Floor, Commissioner's Conference Room, and will be awarded Wednesday, February 11th, at the Commissioner's Public Meeting at 10:00 AM. Questions or to arrange inspection of the vehicle, please call myself, Janine Kennedy, at the Butler County Community Action Office, at 724-284-5125. We request your approval.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you.
Under Commissioners, our first item is related to the Butler County Hospital Authority, and here to present is Solicitor Mary Jo Dillon.
Good morning, Commissioners.
You were hiding behind the post, I didn't see you, everyone was looking.
Good morning. I'm here this morning as Solicitor of the Butler County Housing Authority to request that the Board of Commissioners approve a resolution for the issuance of tax-exempt obligations by the Butler County Hospital Authority for use by the Butler Health System to refund and restructure the 2009 and 2010 bonds that were issued to construct the seven-story tower which opened in 2010. If you'll recall, the 2008 financial crisis had a devastating impact on the bond market, and at the time the 2009 and 2010 bonds were issued, the interest rates were 7 percent or more. Butler Health Systems has the opportunity to take advantage of lower interest rates and has requested that Series 2015 bonds be issued for the purpose of refunding the 2009 and 2010 bonds and to restructure the financing for the debt owed on the tower project. It's not often that the Hospital Authority comes before the Board of Commissioners, so for your benefit and for the benefit of the viewing public, I'll give a quick overview of the history and the function of the Butler County Hospital Authority. Over the years, the County Commissioners have created various authorities for specified purposes, and in 1980, the Butler County Hospital Authority was created by the Butler County Commissioners to provide low-cost financing for additions to Butler Memorial Hospital. And Ann Krebs from the hospital provided me with photographs, and if it's all right with the Commissioners, I'll approach and give you pictures of the projects that were done with money from the hospital.
Do we need to keep these, or...?
Absolutely. So, the first picture shows the addition that was in 1980, and there's a second photograph that has the parking garage that was constructed, and the two last pictures show the seven-story tower.
Very interesting.
Yeah. And so, we initially were created for the Butler Hospital, and over the years, the articles of incorporation for the Hospital Authority has been expanded, and we not only provide financing for hospitals, but also healthcare centers in the county. The Hospital Authority was created under the Municipalities Authority Act, and the Act requires that prior to the issuance of obligations, that the County Commissioners must determine that financing of the project through the issuance of obligations will promote the health, safety, and welfare of the people in the area who serve by the facility, and the Internal Revenue Code also requires approval by the County Commissioners. The resolution that is before the Board today is to approve the issuance of tax-exempt obligations. The resolution provides that approval by the County Commissioners is solely for the purpose of compliance with the Municipalities Authority Act and the Internal Revenue Code. The issuance of the bonds are not deemed to constitute an indebtedness of the county and shall not give rise to a pecuniary liability of the county or charge against its respective credit or taxing powers. The responsibility to repay the obligation is solely on Butler Health Systems and not on the authority of the county, and I respectfully request that the resolution for the issuance of this tax-exempt obligation be taken.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, Joe.
I'd like to say this, I couldn't be happier with it, you know, we kept... They went to these conglomerate hospitals. I think Butler is so lucky to have a community-based hospital, and sometimes they charge up to half the price, like for heart, open heart surgery, it's amazing. They can keep, control the cost more and keep it down, and I'm so happy that we do have a conglomerate here, and then you can refinance these at maybe half the rate, so keep up the good work, I'm very proud of it.
Thank you.
Next, we're seeking your approval of an agreement with the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Butler for the administration of PA Housing Affordability and Rehabilitation Enhancement or FAIR funds in the amount of $150,000. And Commissioners, you'll recall that these funds were originally committed back in 2012 to be administered by Landmarks Community Capital Corporation, and PHFA has consented to revise that grant agreement to transfer those funds to the Authority for the purpose of their low-income owner-occupied housing rehabilitation program. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Next, we're asking your ratification and the Chairman's approval of a reconciliation agreement with Sunnyview Realty LLC and Sunnyview Operating LLC. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
No, I'm just asking, I mean, do the public know what this is, or maybe Ben would do us the gracious honor of telling us what it is, or you can explain what exactly this entails?
Well, it's just the final agreement with the NEST 360, isn't it? That's correct. As with any business transaction or real estate transaction, you're going to have a gross cost or gross sale price, and then you're going to have your net proceeds. And so, as you'll recall, I prepared yesterday for the media and for your purposes, a nice spreadsheet that shows what the original sales agreement called for, and I broke it down based upon land and building, personal property, and the accounts receivable, and so the total gross price of the contract was 20.4 million, and then there's just a reconciliation agreement, it's a true-up, and which leaves the total net cash of 18.7 million.
Seth, thank you very much, Ben. It's a big issue, I appreciate it.
And also, I might add that even though we sold Sunnyview months and months ago, it takes a long time to work out all the final details, but we had to do sewer projects, and I think we still have an elevator pump to put in, some pump in the elevator pit, but basically, we're through, it's a NEST 360, the agreements are all complete, we're works all done, and it's...
Outstanding bills and...
Yes, it's all completed.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next, we're asking your...
Did we cover that?
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry.
We're asking your approval to appoint Neil Ashbaugh of Ober Industries to serve on the Tri-County Workforce Investment Program.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
And last, we're asking your approval to appoint Thomas Cully of the Cranberry Public Library Board to serve on the Butler County Federated Library Assistant Board Trustees, replacing Jane Flotatt. We ask your approval.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.